You ready now?
Yeah.
Okay. Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Welcome our guests and board members. I need to get approval of the minutes that are in your packet. Everybody's had a chance to look over them, or any questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Bruce, you have anything? Add to the meeting here yet?
I mean, I can update the board if they want on the meeting last month.
Okay. Once we get into the... Jim, you have anything to add before we start? Billy?
No, sir.
Jim?
No, thanks.
Bruce? Okay.
Do you want to skip down? We do have the Harveys are here, they have a waiver request-
Okay.
-for subdivision, so maybe we can skip to that point, so they don't-
Okay, fine. Is that all right, everybody?
Yep.
So we're going to skip over, and we're going to go to the waiver request for the Harveys?
Yes, you should have in your packet, or I emailed it to you, a waiver request from Century Engineering. This is out off of Smouse Road, correct? This is one of those cases where there are two existing houses being served by a driveway. There's going to be a third lot that is now going to be served by that same driveway, so that kicks in all of the major subdivision requirements in the subdivision ordinance. Requires it to be a road, built-to-road standards. What they're requesting is, this is, I believe, basically going to be a family situation, so they're requesting just to treat this like a minor subdivision, where it would just be three lots served by a driveway-
Single driveway.
...within a 30-foot right-of-way, rather than requiring all the major subdivision standards of homeowner's documents, road plan, road construction.
Do you see any problem with this, Chad? If you can foresee?
It's similar to the other ones that we've had like this. I don't know that there's any other future plans to subdivide that further.
No.
There are some steep slopes on that property that I think would limit the ability to subdivide. I don't know if it's possible. I think certainly if another lot were to happen off that road, we would need to look at it in terms of upgrading.
So we need to pass this with the contingent here, for their future development? We'll have to address it again at that point, is that...
Yeah, well, I think that would be an assumption, that if they came back in with another lot on that driveway, it'd be the same situation. Hey, you're increasing-
Running pretty solid, and everything pretty good, Jake? I mean-
Good drive.
Okay. Anybody have any other discussion on this?
Do we in these things require anything about just having some kind of a road maintenance agreement in place in case the family isn't a family at some point?
You can. I know in talking with the county attorney, the way that's usually done in a subdivision is there's a homeowner's group that's taking that over, and that provides that mechanism. I know it's come up before, well, can't we just do something simple? I think that gets into kind of some legal question of how easily you can do something like that. So you could say some sort of simple requirement for maintenance, but I think it can be hard to enforce unless you actually have that homeowner's group, like in a difficult subdivision, so I'm not sure how useful it is.
Those properties are bad down from generation to generation, to generation to generation. Then when that generation doesn't exist, you know what I mean? And that's, I think, but that could be-
Yeah, well, there's so many things that can happen. I'm just recommending, if you do this, that you guys create some kind of a road maintenance agreement amongst all yourselves to protect yourselves down the road.
One gets mad at the other, the other's got to put the grime on the road.
That you're... That everybody, you know, I mean, it can be simple, but it probably should be there. Now, I'll tell you, another thing does happen that, you know, doesn't necessarily show up here, but it does happen with regards to getting mortgages, because sometimes if somebody's trying to get a mortgage on one of those properties at some point, and you go out to rocket a mortgage or something like that, they won't provide a mortgage unless there's a road maintenance agreement to get into those properties. So, yeah, I think just in the long run, it protects you all from-
I know for a fact, being the last brother on the end of the road, I take care of the road. No.
Well, no, I get it. I mean, actually, what they make you do is if you're the mortgage company, the mortgage company makes you be responsible for the whole road if, you know, and of course, you don't want to broadcast that to the other people. But that's what ends up happening in order to do it. But it's just probably a good idea long-term.
See any problem with this, Bruce? Jim? Timmy? Okay. I'll need a motion.
Motion.
Motion here, second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? So moved on the waiver. Vote? Negative? Or all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. You're more than welcome to leave, you're more than welcome to stay. It's a exciting place to be, you know? Sorry I was late.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving back to zoning field cases. Get Bruce moving here.
First case this month is VR 817, an application submitted by Deep Creek Solutions LLC for variance to allow the replacement of an existing single-family residence. Owner proposes to build within the current non-conforming grandfathered seven-foot side setback line and within 28 feet of an existing neighboring structure. Property is located at 292 Bram Road, Tax Map 59, Parcel 204, in Zone LR1.
I would point out that this is the type of variance that we have proposed an amendment that we forwarded to the county commissioners, that would just allow this type of thing. This is one of them that's within 30 feet, so it requires that variance. But the amendments that you've all approved would just allow this, we could do this in the office without the variance, if that's approved.
Do you perceive any opposition to this much, or...
No, I've not received anything yet.
Bruce? Any concern? Jim?
I think it's going to make the neighborhood better anyways, if it's a property, I think it is.
Okay.
Second application is VR 818, submitted by Joseph and Stephanie Keough for variance to allow the construction of new accessory garage to within 30 feet of the front property line. Property is located at 267 Woodland Hills Lane, Tax Map 57, Parcel 558, Lot 33, Grid 18, in Zone LR1 as well. I think this one is situated on a slope, and they kind of need to put it in the front yard, so they, between the house, they don't have enough room between the house to maintain the 40.
Woodland Hills, where's that at, Billy?
Lake Shore Drive.
Quarter of a mile up the hill on the left, I would guess.
Got any problem with this, Timmy? Anything?
I don't think.
Okay, moving on next.
Third one, special exception. 494, application submitted by Bob Riley for Thousand Acres Golf LLC. They're seeking a special exception to allow the construction of a public golf course clubhouse associated with the 18-hole public golf course. The clubhouse has provided support facilities and services to members and the public, including golf pro shop, restaurant lounge, meeting room, exercise and locker rooms, and a golf cart storage and maintenance facilities. Property is located on Thousand Acres Road, Tax Map 67, Parcel 780, in Zone Lake Residential 1 as well.
Is that going where the golf shop is now, the temporary?
It's going to go, if you're on the lake looking back at the clubhouse right now, it'll be to the left of it.
Like going out to Hole 1 right there?
No.
That'd be more like lining up with Hole 10.
Away from it.
Right?
I'll go back.
Be on the Hole 10 side.
Yeah, going back.
Correct. Yeah, it would be on the left.
So it'd be behind that pond there?
Beyond the pond, yeah. So the little clubhouse now is kind of to the right of the pond, and this would be on the, to the left of the pond. And then the maintenance facility would be behind it.
Why is a special exception needed?
It's required in the LR1 for that venue.
Wasn't there even something, that there wasn't anything even mentioned in the back clubhouses in the original?
This was actually approved back in 2006-
Yeah.
-with a different plan in mind.
The plan that killed it then was that they wanted dock slips and lake access.
That was a separate ask. There was, I believe, that was for a variance, I believe. Maybe it was a special exception as well. The Marina was killed, the clubhouse was approved. But that, it's been two years, so it's null and void at this point.
Any concern with this one? All right, Bruce, good to go. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Now we're going back to agricultural district.
Yeah, Gary, Aaron Hall from the office is going to present those, get three ag districts.
We have three properties to consider for agricultural districts. Again, the district has a minimum of three years commitment by the county, and they qualify as the applicants to apply for permanent easements through the MAFL Legacy Program. These three applicants attend to apply for MAFL. The first is SY 137. This is 182.89 acres. It's owned by Raymond and Savilla Slavak. It's off of Mansfield Road in Oakland. And this qualifies under the 60% Class 123 soils and Woodlands Class 22 soils. The second property, MVP 138, is 423.2 acres. This is owned by Wilson Corona Partners LLC, off of Wilson Corona Road in Oakland. It qualifies 60% Class 123 soils and Woodlands Class 22. And final property, SOR 139, is a 143.66 acre property owned by Four Mile Ridge Sportsmen's Association LLC. This is off of Frost Bar Road near Fenzel, and this qualifies under 50% Class 22 Woodlands. Just the basic qualifications for properties, they have to be 50 acres or adjacent to a property RDN, not in plant service or water service within 10 years, and meet the soil qualifications that I mentioned. This is the second of three meetings. The Agricultural Advisory Board has already approved these three properties. This will be the second meeting, and the county commissioners next to review them. Questions?
You got, see any problem with this? Anybody? I mean, I don't, I think it, I think it's a good thing, saving the land you can, you know? But, okay, we need to vote on these, or...
Yes.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion, second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the agricultural transfers? Yay? Nay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got the subdivisions last, kind of got my paper messed up here.
Yeah, we got two subdivisions. First one, Ridgeview Valley PRD, Lot 60. You've seen other ones from Ridgeview Valley. This one will be one more lot on the existing road system, so they have other lots they could develop in there, but it would take some additional roads to be built. This one will be served by existing roads, so no new infrastructure. This will be the 32nd lot, I think that they've done. There's 187 remaining. Excuse me, this will be the 33rd, 186 remaining that still could be developed in this PRD.
You see any issues with this? I didn't see any.
No, again, no infrastructure or anything, so it's pretty simple. They will be coming off of Falcon Way that's already existing.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
And the last subdivision will be College Heights. You've all seen this one several times. I think this will be the last lot, Lot 7 and 12 now. This one, all the infrastructure's in place. They've, you've all approved the preliminary plan, they've just been submitting individual lots, so these will be the last two, Lot 7 and 12. Roads have already been inspected and everything's in place.
How many lots are left back? Anybody?
Well, these will be the last two, Lot 7 and 12.
Anybody have any concern for this? Motion? Motion, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, Chad.
Okay.
Comprehensive plan update?
Yeah, just a brief update. I did go ahead and send the comprehensive plan to the local municipalities and to the State Clearing House back on May 11th, so they have 60 days to review it. So it's in the hopper for them to all look at and make comments back to us. I haven't heard anything from anybody yet. I don't know if you've all completed your review, if anybody has any other comments on the plan moving forward?
I did go through it. It's, it is what, I said, it is what it is. A lot of words, a lot of, it's just tough to comprehend where it all goes in one point. It got all run together. But I think the format's a little different, that now they put a section in that kind of, you know, summarizes, makes it a little easier to-
Yeah, the action plans make it easier to see.
So I think that, unless you got, if you guys have any questions on that, Jim, you'll throw it off, and I know you're busy, but the comprehensive plan.
I've looked through it.
Yeah, I just kind of-
It's a little intimidating. I tried to take chances, but you didn't tell us to go at the end of it.
Yeah, the very end, there's an action plan section at the end that really summarizes it. That's Chapter 5. And at the end of each chapter, there's another, there's a section at the end of each chapter that would say, like, land use, land use policies and actions, and then that action plan later on summarizes it.
I didn't read all of that, I've been looking through it.
I was going to stop you, just one other thing.
I was down the halfway through it.
You still got it right. You probably get sleeping cereal, but... The thing is, I was hoping, I still hope we could condense it down, but it's hard to do when you try to put all that stuff into it.
Yeah, there's a lot of background information.
I think it'll be interesting to see what the state has to say about it.
So we have to have two months from them doing it, so they would have till July. So I don't know if anybody, you know, if we want to start thinking about the date to hold the public meetings and the planning commissioner-
I'll go ahead and schedule it. First of August, or whatever, whatever you're going to get.
Okay, let's aim for that August meeting, we'll have a public meeting.
I think we can get it over with quickly, and get it moving quickly, and get it out, get it off your plate for the end of the year.
Yeah, I think, in the meantime-
It's been a long process.
Yeah, we'll know what the state has commented on, and then-
I'm sure they want the rest of their money at some point, too, I would think.
Yeah. And then, once you all approve it, it will go to the county commissioners for final approval.
I mean, I appreciate, what, this guy named Chip, is that the guy that gave us the, the head guy now?
I think Chip was the one who left.
I can't remember. But I'm just saying, I appreciate that he at least followed up with it, and made an effort to get it completed.
Chris, I believe.
Chris?
Yeah. You asked me too quick.
I mean, he stood by it. You know, he got to it. I mean, it's a little bit late, but at least he got to it.
Yeah, and it was understandable last year when people working from home did that.
Okay, now I guess the last thing I want to discuss is the solar amendment. Who's got it? Everybody has to call me that. Bruce, you got it. You probably wrote this, didn't you?
So, after the last planning commission meeting, of course, we had the zoning board of appeals meeting. It lasted until about 12:30 at night. It was rather contentious. The board of appeals decided they wanted more time to think about it, and then, so they took the next week, came back on Thursday. Bruce was there, so I don't know if you want to give a real brief update of just what the zoning board of appeals decided. So this would have been about, of course, the zoning board approved the first phase of this, which is a smaller community solar. And then we had the second phase of that that was much larger. It was not a community system, it was a much larger system. That was what was up for special exception the last time, and the board decided to deny that. So I don't know if you want to give a brief, just little update, just generally some of the reasons.
Well, basically, the board just felt that it wasn't in the spirit of the, you know, intended spirit of the comprehensive plan, and honestly, on the, out of the three criterias for a special exception, it kind of failed on two of those. And basically, it just, we felt it just wasn't, this was possibly the worst place in a zoning district for it. It was going to be a high-visibility area. It's one of the most scenic places around the lake in a watershed, one of the most photograph places. And it just, it just really, just doesn't go longer. And that's what the board decided. At our attorney's suggestion, we deferred our ruling for, we have up to 10 days to do it. In my time of war, we've never, we've never not made a ruling that night. But the, at his suggestion, we delayed it until last Thursday, and we had a meeting at 2:30 in the afternoon, and made our decision then. We-
Are they going to appeal it?
Well, I don't think we've heard anything yet. I mean, both sides of the issue had attorneys. We kind of felt, I think the board kind of felt that it was going to be appealed, no matter which way it went, so we just tried to come up with the right decision and give them as an appeal-proof case as we could.
I mean, do you feel like going down the right path now with what you're proposing here?
Well, definitely, just to clarify, so all the deep creek zoning ordinance says right now, it has a category for electric power generating plants or substations, yards or areas for transforming or switching electricity. It's a very broad statement, and that's where we've put all sorts of power like this. Several years ago, we did amend the ordinance to create a subcategory, industrial wind energy conversion systems, and that's not permitted in the deep creek watershed. So I definitely think it's good to address it in some way, because it puts the board a little bit of a bind, because there's really no other direction there. You know, it's a very broad category. So what I've given everybody is just some proposals of language that we could work with to add into the ordinance. So I don't know if you guys are ready to kind of go through that, or if you have any other questions about the hearing, or...
I think that the hearing was just contentious all the way around, the whole day, cold and everything. There was a couple contentious cases. I think this just got thrown, I'm glad I did, I was going to go, and I said, "Yeah, I gotta go," just because of, you know? But I think that to get a good enough decision shows that, you know, that the board was together on it-
Yeah.
-and thought it was the right thing. That helps. So you had 3-2, whatever, you know? So that was good, so that showed the people that were there against it, that, you know, they had, somebody had their back, also showed the people that were presenting it, that, you know, these guys had a pretty strong case. I concerned, it concerned me on the legal side of how that process works out, if they decide to pursue that route, you know what I mean? But I think once we get something like this in place, it will hopefully eliminate it, like it did with fracking, it did windmills and everything else. You know, but what happens in Garrett County, I keep saying this all the time, in any government, you're reactive instead of proactive sometimes, and that, you know, who would have thought that solar panels were going to be the next top vet issue? You know, I mean, when we took, when they started putting solar panels in, because the state of Maryland was, you get attacked, you know? Oh, I was like, Maryland pays for it, Maryland does it, you know?
I just read an article a couple days ago, that the thing was, McGunder County requires solar panels in all new construction homes, whatever. You can get a waiver from it, but they're pretty strict in granting the waivers, so...
I did-
And they attributed it to McGunder County's-
Well, my biggest concern is the same it is with the windmills. When they shut down and don't use them anymore, who's going to take them down? Those guys are two generations, it's not going to happen. The same thing with these, they're going to sit in the middle of a field, and they're going to rot.
Well, you have decommissioning in here, paragraph on decommissioning. It's similar with Carroll County, I think.
Yeah, and I took that language from-
But the question, the bigger question is, this is just a deep creek watershed-
Yes.
-outside the watershed, are there any rules that say that-
No.
-solar farms had to be decommissioned or anything?
Not outside the watershed.
Can that be done absent zoning in that area, do you know?
That's what was done for the wind turbines, and I don't know the whole history of how that was done, and that's where I took that language from. At some point after that, there was a state law passed that gave the power for setbacks. It was basically specifically a thing for wind power in Garrett County for setbacks and decommissioning. I don't really know how all of that came about. I remember it being passed, but I don't know a lot of the background.
I think that's something that we should look into, because some of these solar farms are pretty big, and if I understand it correctly, there can be an range between the pot burner and cooler rooms to cover decommissioning, but if they don't think to include that-
Yeah, that's a question for the county attorney. How do we do that in the areas that are not zoned?
That's like 450,000 handles, but I think there's something buried into that.
Maybe, but in those non-zoned areas, we don't really have that ability to control land use other than something like that law that was passed specifically for the wind turbines.
Can you ask Mike about this? I'll try to remember if that passed you.
None of us ever think about what happened, Billy made a good point with the road with the Harvey panel. I mean, families fracture, families die off, generations die, you know?
Divorced.
And the same thing with, right, and the same thing with the solar panels like Carroll 42. That guy got paid his money to put solar panels on that piece, you know, farmland there. But what happens in 10 years when that family's, or 15 years when that family's gone? You know what I mean? I just, I mean, I know there's generations to follow, but a lot of families, you know, this is the last, unless you got 19 kids that are, you know, standing in line, or grandkids or whatever. I mean, it's just kind of, that's the only thing that worries me, is when I look back down, or look everywhere, 30, 40 years now, and I say, those solar panels are still sitting there, and they're not doing a damn thing. You know what I mean? What happened to them? What happened to, well, this guy passed away, and his family passed away, and the guy that signed the contract, he, you know, he's not there anymore, you know what I mean? So, I mean, it-
Do those things typically get a lease per month on them, or do they get paid upfront for everything?
I don't, I don't know, Tim, how does that go?
Most of them get a land lease.
Windmills, they got paid upfront, didn't they?
They get a land lease.
The ones I've seen have been leased.
I mean, I, that's what I remembered, I'm saying, I don't, you say they get a land lease?
The solar company will lease the land per acre.
For how long?
Typically will do an upfront to hold, to have them to hold kind of thing while they're processing their stormwater grading issues and things like that. And then, once it's approved, and the lease typically changes over time, either growing in fees or lessening. They're not typically-
What's usually the standard lease time? 10 years, 15 years?
I believe it's 20.
That's long. I think it's longer than that. I think ours is 30.
Is that right?
I think, and it's, and then they pay on a megawatt.
Faces.
You know, like when Texas, you know, when Texas teacher put the gas line, you're maxing it down through, well, they went across the property, going back on the farm, you know, and then you go down. And it's funny how that lease is so binding for 99 years, or whatever it was. Well, 99 years, a lot of people are going to be gone, they were in that original deal. You know, that bike line's still there.
Tim, is yours getting a land lease plus megawatt, or is it just flat megawatt fee?
They have, like you said, a pre-construction, kind of a minimum royalty kind of thing for this year, next year, the third year, things like that to hold in. Then, once they start construction, then there's other mechanisms that kick in. Then, once, and once the windmill's up and producing, then it kicks in another fee per megawatt hour, however they regulate it. And I think, I think I've seen them, 30 then could go to 60 years. And I don't know whether you guys know, Jim probably does, you know, the ones that went on the mountain behind the paper mill, they're already replacing those turbines with new units. And I think I saw a huge, like $9 million to do that, and only going to get another year or two or something. It didn't sound economically favorable to me to do that, but, you know, those are the, were the first ones that had noise issues, so I hope, hope these are better than the first round. But there are, if you go down the mountain, there's a crane, big crane standing up, and they're replacing those turbines now, on all those original.
So when those, when those properties, or when that stuff goes in, whether it be solar panels or wind turbines, does the property owners still get the ag tax benefits and stuff out of that?
That's a good question.
Ours, ours are in West Virginia, so it's not in the ag stuff.
The agreements I've seen, the solar leasing company picks up any additional tax?
It's, so if it got knocked out, but my, my real question is, what's the county's position on that? Does the county still allow them to be in-
Does the county still allow them to be in ag tax if?
I wouldn't think.
This came up years ago with the wind turbine. I can't remember.
Well, my question with this is, is that an opportunity to say that if you comply with all these rules, then you, and you're outside of zoning, then you would still potentially qualify for, you know, because you're, you're providing some kind of a benefit of use of the property? I don't know. I'm just saying.
I think the Attorney General issued some kind of ruling on that, and I can't remember what it was, because it went through the same thing back when there was discussion about fracking, would they get to off the gas and still stay in the land? I can't remember the answer though.
Yeah, I just, you know, if, if, if these are things that you're concerned with completely all over the county and how they're being done, you know, maybe there's a way to say, well, you know, this qualifies and, you know, under certain restrictions, blah, 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 to, to help maybe protect against those things that.
We can ask Mike and get back to you. I just can't, it's been resolved.
I mean, I'm just trying, I'm thinking out loud for the purpose of, of what benefits the entire county, not, not that I necessarily have an issue with it one way or the other. I'm, I'm still of a big belief that within ten years, you're gonna see the, the whole technology and these things change to a place where they're gonna have to make them look like the ground that they're in in order to get areas to approve them because of the zoning.
Well, that's my biggest complaint with green, so-called the green energy stuff is, when I'm pumping fuel, I'm pumping it through a fuel line. And it's underground or just on the ground, and it doesn't take up a big footprint. When I'm putting in a windmill, when I'm putting in a solar farm, that takes a big footprint. So, you know, people don't realize how convenient and how easy, and for that matter, there's very little problem with it unless you have a spillage. What's gonna happen when this oil starts leaking, like that one down, there was one fire down on top of my mountain, I was coming up over from Morphyo one time down there playing golf, one just burning. And there's oil running out the, where's that end up at? Is there any kind of valve port to run into? No. It runs down on the ground and then runs out on the surface. I mean, that, that's my take. Well, nobody thinks about, how does it affect, like, Billy said, ten years down the road, twenty years down the road. And it's not gonna, and I'm gonna tell you the truth, it's not gonna take that long for some of it. That's the problem. Like Timmy was just talking about, those haven't been there, what, five years? Maybe?
Probably longer than that, but, yeah, not their full life.
They're replacing the, you know.
Because technology's better, so they think they can benefit, not that they're worn out.
The type of stuff they're generating out of them isn't what they thought it was gonna be. And they tried to sell to everybody. When they tried to sell to the commissioners, they tried to sell to the chamber of commerce back when I was going on with this windmill. You know, I just, I just don't think people realize that it's, the cleanup on aisle six is gonna be very difficult compared to. If I've got an oil spill, I bring, have my team in, I clean it up. When this starts leaking for how many years or something, you know, nobody knows. And then you gotta clean the neighborhood, you know? I don't know. It's just, it's just a tough, it's a tough hunt for people to understand that green energy is all great, you're saving it, but what are you really saving it in? And we don't have the answers for that. I mean, we never had the answers for that. Because it's just so difficult to, you know, actually, I looked at it down on forty-two. Have you been down by there? You know, before getting into, you know, you look out that field, I'm about to be in a field full of corn. That's green, you know what I mean? And this stuff.
Well, yeah, my real point though is, is that I think that solar panels, within ten or fifteen years, or whenever it is.
Oh, yeah, the technology. I agree with you.
They're gonna end up looking like plants before it's all said and done, just like now you go into certain areas. Like, I was in Charlotte over the weekend. You don't see a cell tower that looks, I mean, you can tell it's a cell tower, but it's covered and it looks like a big pantry now.
Right.
And, and so they look a lot better than they used to. And, you know, you've got solar panels.
But what about the ones that are still vending?
Well, that's my point is, is that, you know, to, to try to encourage things that if it's gonna be in areas outside of zoning, are there ways to try to encourage the landowner to, to use these kind of provisions in order to maintain some other benefit that they already get? You know, if you don't stay within the lines, then you may not qualify any longer to be this or that. I don't know if that's doable legally, right? I'm just, you know, my point is, is I'm trying to, to say, hey, is there a way to creatively look at this that ends up not hurting the landowner, not hurting the county, and ends up being?
Not hurting the environment.
Right. And that's all I'm, I'm saying. I'm just, I want people to think, are there other, are there ways to do this that, that can make it better for everybody involved? I don't know if there are.
I'd be glad I had the answer, right?
Something I, something I heard about those ones on Green Mountain that they're removing, that very little of that's recyclable, which sounds strange to me. I thought we could recycle about everything today.
Wow.
And I'm not, I'm not sure what the componentry is, but they're not recyclable either, so. Those big wind turbines are gonna go, the big blades aren't recyclable, so they must end up in a landfill somewhere.
Are they, are the blades fiber blades?
I think maybe that's what, yeah. I know, I think you don't want to be around any of those things with flared bricks.
No.
They can fly for a long ways.
Well, I think this, I think the timing of this is good because, well, actually, we're behind.
Yeah, I think so.
It's good that we're doing something for the immediate future anyway.
Yeah, at least for the watershed. So just in general, I had this designed in two parts. Solar energy generating system, commercial, which will be the bigger ones, like we've discussed on Sand Flat. And then later on, there's a second category for accessory. So we can start with the commercial. But accessory would be anything that's on a roof, anything that's accessory to an existing use. So I think these are two separate discussions.
Oh, I think, yeah.
So if you wanna start, I came up with a definition. Some of this is a little bit copy and paste too, so I didn't just make all this up. But looking at other zoning regulations. So for commercial, I said a facility of solar energy collectors with the primary purpose of wholesale or retail sales of generated electricity. Solar energy collectors should be, may include, may include photovoltaics, concentrated solar thermal, or solar hot water devices. What Billy said, you know, there's a lot of different technology out there, so try to capture some of that. This definition includes community solar systems where customers buy or lease a portion of the energy produced by the system. So I think one of the first questions is, do we want to lump those two together? As we saw with one on Sand Flat, there can be big differences between the community solar system that's limited to two megawatts. I believe that one was ten or fifteen acres coverage.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. The next one was not community, so it was not limited in megawatts. It was a much larger solar field. So the way I wrote this would just be to include both of those, but one option would be to have two categories. One for these communities, smaller systems where people are subscribing and there's more of a community buy-in. You could have that as one category and the regular ones, the larger ones, as another category, or we can just say we're gonna just anything that's commercial together.
We're gonna try to setbacks and things like that. We're gonna try to do both of them the same?
Well, that's the question. I did it, I didn't divide them up, but that would be one question. Do you, do we look at those differently?
Step back the community could be a hundred feet. Step back for the non-community could be.
Well, I think a lot of it's gonna be the size. I think when you look at them, in the one sense, they're gonna look, the solar field will look the same, but it's gonna be a much larger scale.
So then we won't get, then the that case, if I would want to look at them separately. Would I be right in saying that?
I mean, I don't believe that that's the, I don't believe that's the word separation is a solar array. It's a solar array, in my opinion. The, the word separation is, is what Chad said to me was, you know, solar panels on your house in your yard for use on your property, that's fine, that's one thing. But these, these are large solar farms. I don't really see the distinction between the two. I mean, I see the distinction, but I don't see where, I don't see the.
You don't see the necessity to split them up?
In what we're trying to do here, a solar farm, a solar farm in my mind. I mean, if it's fourteen acres, you know, if it was only fourteen acres on this side of the hill for the one that we just did in Sand Flat, it would be a whole different. The board approved one that's fourteen acres on the backside where you can't see it from anywhere.
So the answer to that question is no, then?
I think it's no.
Okay. You guys agree with that? Tim? Do you have any okay with that?
Okay.
Billy?
Yep.
So the next question will be then, if we're gonna use that general definition of any of these commercial ones, do we wanna make it permitted, not permitted, or permitted by special exception in the different categories? When we did agriculture, or when we did industrial wind, it was just not permitted. The ordinance was amended to make that not permitted. So that would be one option, we would just say we're not, not allowing them, or we could say it's gonna be a special exception again.
What's gonna be easiest for the police, the, 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 the?
Well, as much as, as much as I would like to say not permitted, in a, in a meeting that we had with the county administrator and some other folks, the attorney, they, you correct me if I'm wrong, they suggested that we don't exclude it, just, just say no. They say that's a hard, that's a hard position to defend. The, his suggestion was, you know, more of the special exception with conditions that may make it cost prohibitive or just not practical. But he recommended against just saying no. He thinks that is, that basically what he does.
I believe so. And the other thing to consider is, is the planning commissioner will have the first step in this, and then it goes to the county commissioners. And I won't put Jim on the spot, but, you know, whatever you do here, this will also be looked at for the county commissioners. And I don't know what their feeling is about banning it outright, so it may be that we wanna find an acceptable, something acceptable that maybe protects it through setbacks and things like that.
I think we're gonna get legal advice from Mike, who says the same thing that Rufus said. So obviously, we're not gonna do anything until we run by him and get his, his authority on it.
So I think in that case, it may be better to say if we're, if it's potentially going to happen, let's try to put safeguards in through setbacks and things like that. So does that, does a special exception would be?
I don't think you have any other way to please it other than, I mean, that's what I have to be, I think, don't you?
Well, you're suggesting that we not say not permitted, right?
Well, again, that, you're right, that may be a question for Mike. That would be one option. We did it with wind. Sometimes you do things that it may not be easily defensible, so it's kind of two different things. We could all say, yeah, we're gonna ban it.
And the problem, one of the problems with wind was it wasn't in an area that was zoned, and by saying it's not permitted, it was kind of like spot zoning or something, that people might call it, so. I don't know. I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if there's a strong feeling that we just do not at all want it in the watershed, that is one that we could take. That's something we'd have to defend legally, and it'd have to be something the county commissioners were comfortable with.
You're talking about it's a hard position to defend.
But could you, could you not allow them like an LR one, an LR two?
You could. And that's the other thing. You could look at the different zoning classifications and say it's not suitable here.
Town center or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, the, the thing is with the town centers and the places that usually allow more flexibility, those are usually smaller places where you're not gonna have wind. These larger wind panels are probably gonna go in the areas like ag resource, rural resource, just by their nature. So they, there's a bit of a contradiction there. Some of the things that we don't allow people to do, businesses and all kinds of things in these residential zones, now we have some of a larger type of industrial use going in those areas.
Everybody good with that?
So it would be special exception?
Yeah.
So I think the next question then would be the different things I came up with to regulate then, setbacks. I just, the things in parentheses are just something I threw out kind of as a discussion starter. I put a setback of two hundred. I know we had previously looked at a amendment proposed by the Board of Appeals that would have said a thousand foot setback, so this is open for discussion. Just for a little clarification, a thousand foot setback, so if you were thinking of that, that would basically be a two thousand by two thousand foot parcel, that would give you a thousand foot setback. That doesn't really leave you any room to put the panels. But a thousand foot setback, you'd be looking at roughly a ninety acre or ninety-one acre parcel?
Where that, where the thousand acre, or the thousand feet came from was that is, that's already in the zoning ordinance, that was what we, that was introduced for fracking. Fracking as a thousand.
We did two thousand feet from the high water mark and then a thousand feet from the proctor line, right?
Something like that, yeah.
I mean, a thousand, a thousand feet, right. I'm like Chad, a thousand feet.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there so everybody understands what that means.
If you do, if you do a minimum, for lack of a better term, do a minimum, like size. Minimum, minimum solar panel rate can only be put on a fifty acre parcel or whatever.
That's also in the campground part, portion too. I think it's, is it twenty-five acres minimum?
Yeah, I forget what that is.
Campgrounds and two hundred foot setbacks.
Would that be easier to do, would that be easier to do, I mean, throw some setbacks in there, but also throw a lot size or property, you know, size?
Well, he addresses, Chad addresses some percentage of total area here in the next couple ones down. So he, some, some combination of that, I think, is correct, is the regulation.
Right. When I was looking down, I mean, that's all you did, David. I'm saying if, if you said you had to be a minimum of fifty acres.
Yeah, you could do that.
It would just give you a better, a better chance on a special exception. No, you don't have a five acre piece, nobody come in and say, you know what I mean? I just, I worry about the thousand foot setback in a sense of, with fracking, fracking, if you go down and over, that, you know what I mean, that's why I put that thousand, two thousand feet or whatever, you can go down and, or along, you know what I mean? But.
So does a minimum?
Get the gas after I'm near your house.
I'm hearing a minimum acreage of fifty, fifty acres to do one?
I mean, is that, I don't know what, what you think, Tim.
The only issue that I think we run into then is looking at communities that might make most, you know, like, while this is going on, I'm, there's something place like Blakesley where Blakesley has some places that are almost hidden from everything else anyways, where, you know, something like that, if they ever wanted to do something back in there, it could be done, nobody ever say it. You know, down where they keep all the boat trailers and that stuff now back in there, it's basically hidden. And it probably would be a good place for somebody like that to do so. I, I think that then you're eliminating all the communities if you make it a minimum of fifty acres, but.
There's still the option later on to discuss accessory uses. So if it was something like a, you know, they had a clubhouse and they wanted to put solar on it to fuel the clubhouse, that would be considered more an accessory use. So this would be more a larger scale solar fields.
Okay.
What, the piece, the piece down on forty-two, how big is that? You haven't, you haven't even remember that way you get pieces?
I don't know at the top of, I don't know at the top of my head what it is.
Is that twenty acres?
I really don't remember.
I mean, that's, that's a big field. I mean, that field runs all the way down to, to the other road down below.
Yeah, we could pull that up. I just don't know at the top of my head.
And right, right there, you probably have, from the, from forty-two to the edge, you probably have two hundred feet probably, don't you?
Possibly.
Maybe.
That one's not in zoning, so it didn't really come up as much.
Trees, they planted some trees, about any big in there, you know. That'd help a lot in twenty years.
Ten, fifteen years, it'll do something.
Yeah.
Wind will blow across it.
Yeah, those will all.
Pick them off, one by one.
Well, I was talking to somebody, they were, just in general, they were looking at a parcel that was about fifty-five acres. And they said, for example, in that parcel with two hundred foot setback, you would take that fifty-four acre, that would reduce that inner perimeter to about thirty acres.
How much?
To thirty.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Fifty-five down to thirty of usable land within that.
Keeps everything sucked into the center, you know what I mean, so setbacks. That's the only reason I said fifty, because it's an even, it's an even number and it's the same way it worked where you get you with the, say, you have five hundred foot setback. But whatever it is, that parcel allows you to put a buffer between the, like you were talking about out of Blakesley, if you had a, you wanna keep that green area between. And that's the other thing you can do too, is making sure that gets sucked in at the center of the lot, not out. You know, as much, gives you a buffer strip to.
I think the community system seems like they probably need about fifteen acres of usable land for the panels themselves. The larger ones can vary, you know, they could be any size. I don't really have a clear cutoff on that.
Three or four years ago, when they came through, they were doing ten acre solar arrays, so maybe they're a little bigger now.
I just think that, the ten acres, just. I just think that, with the 10 acres, it just, seems like an awful small parcel to them.
What's, what's the one down by the Grantville garage? It's not very big, is it?
It's not very big.
No, I don't think so. I don't, I don't mind the top, off, off the top of my head, any of those sizes though.
Maybe one by a sewage plant or maybe it's not that big.
I think it's like 20 acres, I'm not sure.
And you, you can see a reflection of that one when you're coming to, on Oakland Sangre.
I've not noticed it.
You can see it pretty clearly when you.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes so many of them to generate any kind of power that's worth anything. If it's a 10 acre parcel, I don't want, you know, we don't want you, how much power you can generate. That's why I asked how big that piece was there on 42, because it seemed like an awful lot of solar panels to generate, you know, three kilowatts of power.
Which two meg, they're, they're limited to two megawatts if it's the community system. So the community is where you get subscribers, they all pay for a certain amount of that. And it's, I believe it's limited to two megawatts AC.
Is that, just, is that, that many solar panels, two megawatts?
Yeah, that's what that one is. And that's what the first phase on Sand Flat was.
That's how some of the counties regulate their solar as well, by megawatts, by limiting certain zones to that two megawatt size, you're limiting them to a 14 acre, 15 acre of coverage, which means you're not gonna get, you know, you're not gonna have those 200 acre farms covered where it's just very impactful to everyone.
I don't, I'm not, I'm just doing that number out there, that doesn't, but when, what I think I read or what somebody said, the max of, the most efficient, about 56, 50 acre lot to be, to make enough power to, to, uh, to make a difference, you know, I mean, realistically.
Well, I think the, I think you can help yourself with the setback, someone at the 50 acre thing, I'm not sure that who's qualified to make that decision. The setback is some way to control it, I think.
Yeah, because even if you have a large parcel, I think you wanna control where it, where it's located on that parcel, you know, a little bit.
That's what I said, the 200 foot setback. A 50 acre parcel gives you 30 acres of usable.
200, 200 feet's a pretty good sized jump.
Yeah, I just threw that out there, so I'm sure solar companies would probably prefer 50 or something like that, but.
Sand Flat was doing 25, I think, right, that was all they were doing, maybe it was 50.
I think they had 50. Well, the question in my mind though is if you had, if you had a wooded area between that was a minimum of so many feet, you know, you potentially could set, setback something based upon, you know, if it's totally exposed, it's this. If it's, if it's got mature trees or whatever around it, might be that. If there's a residential house on, or something around it, it could be, you know, something, something along those lines of having a little bit of flexibility with that stuff based upon, you know, things that just make common sense.
You gotta remember in the winter time, those trees are bare, unless you're demanding like evergreens around.
Well, and that, it, you know, this says, you know, that there would be evergreens put in around them, but, you know, which I think's a, a good idea.
Right.
Cause that, that's the best way to hide them.
Right.
So, you know, do, do the evergreens have to be of a certain height when they're put in above what's there?
Yeah, we had, we talked about that as well, that, like the one on Friendsville Road, they put in like two foot tall.
Right, yeah.
They're not even up to the.
By, by the time they're tall enough to block anything, the technology would be totally changed.
Right, and if you drive by there right now, about 30% of them are laying on their side already.
No doubt that went through there.
Yeah.
But do you say, do you say that if they?
It's something we talked about for the Sand Flat.
Yeah.
Array was the possibility was maybe to demand six or eight foot tall hemp logs or whatever to, to block, you know, the, the look of it. But that thing was sitting down in a hole on the proposed site, so no matter what you put around it, it wasn't gonna shield the, the neighbors from that.
You gotta realize what an evergreen tree is, and after that stuff all starts falling off that tree, covering up your solar panels, somebody could be out there with a room all the time, speaking of buying yours off of them. You know, cause it's just gonna block the sun at some point, you know?
Right.
I had that marked down in my paper too, Chad, that we, we should dictate how tall this screen is, so you don't, you don't get what you got on 42 when you get a little, a little one foot tall thing.
Charlie Brown.
What those are down there.
Well, what about, let's, let's go back to the setback. Do you have a feeling about that? 200 foot, more lenient, more strict?
I think it should be more than less. I mean, remember, we're trying to limit this in the zoning district, in the view shed, in the watershed area. I think it should be as much as you can stand. I mean, we already have a precedent in there with the fracking of 1,000 feet. I'm not saying 1,000 feet's the number, but remember, the, the, the goal is here to try to limit this in the zoning district. So I, I don't know why we get, why we get, why we don't try to go more aggressive than less.
All right, so this room is 28 feet deep.
Counting ceiling panels.
Yeah. Well, it just gives you a beginning idea of, you know, if you, if you had, you'd need, what? Seven of these rooms to get to the 200 feet, is what you're looking at, that's 196 feet, I think.
That's why I think that if you go to a little larger acreage, it protects a little bit more too, acreage size. You know, when you went to the 50 acre.
Well, the setback's gonna limit what that's gonna be anyway. If they don't, if you have a, say a 500 foot setback, 50 acres is.
Only gonna be 20 acre, 20 acres using.
You're not gonna have enough land left to make it work well, so if that's the idea of the.
Yeah, it's kind of the goal.
See, the problem, see with the windmill or fracking, you were talking about one entity, setting a thousand foot back off the property line in there when your, your derrick went up to that point. Okay, with this, you have a ray coming. Ground level that's spreading out footprint.
What if you used almost the cookie cutter lots that became zoning lots until everybody started doing the planned unit? Where a lot has to be an acre, and it had to be a minimum of 150 feet of frontage on the road, which made it have to be a minimum of 300 feet deep to get the, the acre, right? 45,000 square feet. So, so what if you made it 300 feet? So then that way, if it's backing up to somebody, it's at least the average depth of a lot to what the lot already was. So you'd have two lots of depth. Then at least you have something that is, most of, most of the areas where you put anything like that have lots that would be that size today.
Yeah, I think that's what we have to consider, you know, where are there large parcels of property? Maybe right next to subdivisions that these could be going in, I think that's what we're trying to find.
Yeah, the turkey neck area, Persian Farms.
All through Sand Flat, or, yeah. 495, you know, you get on that other side of the watershed, it's not, it's in the watershed, but it's not, you know, a direct lake area, and also the northern kinda spur up near, accident.
Being on the airport.
Yeah, and that, that sort of area. So you'd have some of those areas are a little more isolated, but, you know, this is mixed in with strictly residential uses potentially. So I think that's what we need to look at with these setbacks and things like that. What's, if we're saying that we wanna find a way potentially for this to work in the watershed, I think we need to find protections for those areas that we have set aside in addition to only be residential.
I mean, a thousand, if you have 50 acre lot, 1,000 foot setback, you, you take most, most of the smaller stuff out of play.
Well, 1,000 foot setback, you'd have to have a, I think, a computer, 91 acre lot.
Right.
Just to have a, no footprint.
Just a couple of.
Yeah, that's just two, that's a thousand feet from each property line, you're looking at a 2,000 by 2,000 lot, you're looking at 91 acres, so.
So you pretty well lock that, you lock that any, any color panels.
You'd be almost 150 acres by the time you're done with it.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, just in general.
Put anything in.
Would it make sense to make the setback greater from public roads than it does from, I mean, if you had a place that was, say the Sand Flat road place, it certainly would've liked the 1,000 feet from the road, wouldn't have, wouldn't have bothered you so much if you had 200 feet from the neighbors or a wooded parcel. Is that, could you do it somewhere like that, or do you, I mean, in, in, like residential, we have certain setbacks for one, I mean, all zoning districts, I guess we do. I mean, could you do something like that makes sense to make it more from public thoroughfare or public property or?
The only thing with that, it may be counterproductive if, depending on how the land slopes, you may be pushing it farther away from the place that you can't see, and then pushing it up the hill or something, which makes it hard to kinda have these rules, because each one of these, each lots could be, as we saw on Sand Flat, you had one part of that property that laid in an area was not real visible, you have another part that was very visible, so moving it around.
And the goal was again, the goal was to keep them out of the watershed, they just do what we, you go to the 50 acre minimum lot, 1,000 foot setback, and that eliminates.
Yeah, that's an option, you know, that's.
That eliminates the whole process without getting into any, you know.
Well, and at, if it's any consolation, at the next step, it's gonna get more, it's gonna get scrutinized by some more legal minded folks than us maybe.
I mean, that.
And that's kinda up to you guys too, how, what your, what you're feeling is. I mean, there's two ways to look at it. You can say, look, solar's green energy, we wanna promote it wherever, and the other option is to say, this is the Deep Creek watershed, we've got a resort community, and we don't think it's suitable in that area. And that, that's the challenge, you know, cause I think.
I didn't, I just didn't realize how much disdain was for the project that got, the other day, came in the other day, so I talked, some of the people I talked to surprised me, that they were against it.
Three or four to one against, right? I would say fair.
Well, more than.
No, I know, I know exactly, but some of the people that were calling me were people that I'd said were developers, were builders, were, were people that normally would not have an issue with that, because it would affect, if they had large parcel land, they wanted to sell part of it, you know? It's just, it's kinda strange that it was, it was that much. So there must be, the feeling must be that they want, people don't want it in the watershed, which.
Well, they don't want it in the watershed until it benefits them.
That's the bottom line, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's, this is not a knock on green energy, it's just a, it's just a statement that doesn't belong in the zoning district, it doesn't belong in the view shed, in our, in our, in our, you know, watershed, or in a place where our number one economic driver is tourism and natural beauty, it, it doesn't belong here.
And that's the case, then you go, do, do what we did, we put, put in a thousand feet. I mean, your 25 foot height, that's fine, it is not, you know, they're not ever 25 foot high.
I, I think it can be less than that, didn't they tell us they were 10 foot high or something that, that?
At the highest point, when, when they tilt to the apex, I thought it was 15 feet, but.
I saw 25 in another zoning ordinance, cause I was, I just, that's why I just.
Depends on how big those panels are, when they tilt up, they're obviously gonna.
It seemed high to me, but I wasn't, I didn't do a lot of research on all the different panels, I just saw that in another.
So those things move during the day or something?
They follow the sun, they're slowly tilt to follow the sun.
You went down on 42, man, it's kinda wack, that's gonna get people wrecked, and it's even worse when you're there.
I didn't realize that.
With all this, whether it's accessory or anything, I mean, I think from Bruce's and my standpoint, we try to think about what's gonna happen when that person comes in the office with an application, and you some, you have to try to think of worst case and best case scenarios, you know, what's the thing that we all think is a good thing that we don't wanna prohibit? But then on the other side, what's the thing that we're all going to be upset about when it happens? Is there a way to have some foresight and, and make some requirements for that? So certainly, there are probably places in the watershed that are wooded that you could go in and carve out a patch of that wood and put a, put a small system in that wouldn't be visible, but I think we've got other places that are very visible and gonna be.
If you're gonna handle a special exception, put the rules in, if somebody wants to go come in and ask for it, then do a case by case, that's, that's all, that, that, what did you guys may say, that's all right, but.
Well, we have to remember too, that the board, there is a presumption of approval with a special exception. So if there were something very specific that they find, they have the right to approve it, but I don't think we wanna, we shouldn't assume that the board's gonna be the ones denying them, because their, their hands are somewhat tied, they have that presumption of approval, so.
Well, it's nice to, to come from presumption, I mean, they're gonna come with a 100 acre lot, that's all they can come with, to do any kind of a field.
Yeah, so I just.
If we do what you're talking about now.
The setback, so if that came to a point where, as Bill was pointing out, like a little wooded section that you could hide it in, they could still ask for a variance.
Right, right.
To do it in a special place where nobody, it's not gonna affect anybody. But that's part of the, the main part of the, the plan is so that it's in harmony with and not affecting the adjoining neighbors, properties, you know, things like that are all very, those are things that can be debatable through a variance, but through a special exception, it's presumed permitted with conditions can be placed on it.
I, I guess my, my big concern with all this is, is just, you know, I'll go back to satellite dishes. And satellite dishes came in and they were huge, they were swimming pools. And then, and, and, you know, like in Blakeslee, they had to be, they had to be approved as part of the architectural guidelines. And they ended up denying one of the, the houses on, on that. And later that year, the feds came in and said, no, you have to approve satellite dishes on these places. And, and so in that particular situation, there was no way to make that person take that dish down off their house, because, you know, I mean, they didn't put anything in there that you could have a dish this big, they just said that you have to allow them to be left there. You couldn't make them take it down. And, and so I'm looking at this and I'm going, all right. I am, I'm a big believer that within 10 years, they're gonna come up with a whole different style of solar panel that won't look like crap. And, and so the point being is, do we want, you know, I, I'm, I'm just thinking, we need to have some way to allow this to be, to go away, or to be modified. And that's why it concerns me, as much as I don't necessarily wanna see them right now, I don't think 1,000 foot is a reasonable approach versus, you know, I, I'd much rather see 1,000 foot if it was on a farm field. You know, and, but, but if, if there's already trees there and they agree to leave the trees on the property, and even if it gets to the winter time, then maybe 300 or 500 or whatever it is, 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 becomes a reasonable approach. I, I, I don't know, I, I'm just, the more I think about this, the more nervous I get with overdoing it, and then having a situation come back later where we go, hey, wait a minute, this is probably a good thing now, and, and can we just tear this up at that point?
Yeah, you can always amend the ordinance, I think as technology comes about, you could then address, you know.
Or, or can you do something like say, you know, we're gonna put a five year moratorium on these right now, and wait and see what happens with, with technology?
I think it's, it's hard to suspend your regulations. I think you need to amend the regulations and enforce them. I don't think you can just say, well, we're not gonna deal with any applications for five years. I think from, from talking to county attorney, I don't wanna misquote him, but I think, you know, you should try to amend it so you're comfortable with it, and you enforce your laws, rather than just saying, we're gonna ignore our laws for a while.
So if I'm correct, if you're correct, 500 acres means you need to have, you have 30, 30 acres left over to put your thing, a 200 foot, right?
This was roughly, the, the one example I have was a 55 acre parcel, a 200 setback, 200 foot setback reduced that inner perimeter to roughly 30 acres.
So then if you go 300 feet, it'd be 20 acre.
I didn't compute all that.
But I'm saying, so.
So, yeah.
See what I'm saying, Bruce, if you go 500 feet, even the 50 acre minimum lot, you're only using. See what I'm saying, Bruce, if you go five hundred feet, even a fifty acre minimum lot, you're only using.
I think the bigger the setback, you're automatically driving it to a bigger lot, you need a larger parcel to do it, the bigger the setback is.
And I would say to your point, Bill, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but, and as, as the technology improves, I think that it would seem to me that it's going to be, when you say it's going to start shrinking, in other words, it's not going to take as much, I would think the natural progression of solar panels would be, they're going to be able to get more energy from less panel, so if that's the case, it's actually as, as the, as the, um, technology gets better, the, it's, it's going to, it's going to get more favorable, because we're going to be only allowed in these smaller spaces, so maybe, to your point, ten years from now, a, a, a space that's, thirty acres, that we, that we're only allowing thirty acres because of setbacks, might not be feasible now, but in ten years, it might be, I would think that's the way it would go, I wouldn't think it would get better, I wouldn't think.
Now, see, the other concern I have is if we just, if, say, Bill brought up a good point about Blakesley. Let's say all of a sudden they get to, HOA gets together and says, hey, we're a lucky builder, I got them, I want to put a solar, we want to put a solar panel array, or a windmill, or whatever it is, and they decide that, uh, we come back and look at our regs and they say, oh, I don't, so we're going to put it out in front, in our front yard. I mean, you got to control that, but if the HOA would vote that, or put one, put them on our roofs, or put them on, you know, I mean, I mean, which is worse, you know?
Well, I, yeah, the accessory, we can discuss the accessory uses later, um, so that's a whole different animal, do we want to allow them on the roofs and, and yards, but I think for the big commercial arrays is a separate animal.
I mean, I, I look at it like, it sounds like it's, it's unanimous that there's some wind blowing through Garrett County, that nobody wants to see this anywhere. So for right now, we accept, like you said, two-year down the road, maybe a different planning commission, we may still be here, I mean, we have to deal with it then. You know, I mean, if, if the technology changes, I don't know, whatever you guys.
Look, whatever we do, we got, we, we need to get something in the ordinance, because this is here now, they're, they're getting, questions about it, almost daily, anymore weekly, at least, so it's coming, so, right now, it's not addressed in the zoning ordinance, or we, we need to do something. Anything we do is going to need approval, okay, I, I, I just, you know, again, from my standpoint, after what we saw in this, in, in this one, and talking to the county attorney and everybody, it seems like you want to, if, if, the board agrees that this is not a, something that we want to see proliferated in the zoning, in the zoning district, we need to make, we need to come up with stricter requirements. Whether that be setback from a lot size, um, or what happened, I don't know that you can be too strict at this point.
I mean, what do you, I mean, whatever you guys feel like is the right number, I, I mean, I, I mean, I agree, I, I just keep sticking that fifty acre lot in there, because that, all the numbers work, the setback numbers work, you know what I'm saying? As far as you go, two hundred feet, three hundred feet, four hundred feet, you're condensing the usable space. And at five hundred feet, you're looking at ten, a little less than ten acres probably to, to use the space. And I'm just looking at how many five, how many fifty acre parcels are available at this point to put, is that enough? We need to drop, we need to go, say, thirty acres at fifty, five hundred feet or whatever, you know, something like that to condense it even further. Or if you just want to shut it down, now you're shutting down a thousand feet of fifty acre, shut that, that, they clear out a plate, now you'd have ninety, ninety acre lot to even do it. Right, is that right, Chad?
Yeah, I think a thousand foot setback, you're, without saying it, you're basically, you would basically be not, not permitting. There would be very few, I shouldn't say you couldn't do, there'd be very few parcels big enough, um, that would almost be like saying you had to have a hundred twenty-five acre lot to do it. I don't think it'd be too many of them, so.
And I think that was more of the, more of the goal in the fracking thing, I understand what you're saying, but I think that was the goal of that.
Well, the consensus of people at that meeting, it sounded like that's what the goal was.
We definitely had people who were in that neighborhood, um, the other side of this is you always have landowners. You're going to have.
No, I agree, I mean, that's like, you take big landowners that have all kind of acreage in rural areas.
And again, you, you try to think of both sides to it, you have areas like four ninety-five that you are getting a little away from the lake, you know, and, some of that even goes over towards O'Brien Road, and some of those areas that are outside of the, what we think of as the lakefront area, but it's still in the watershed, so those would be areas that, you'd be potentially denying those people their right to do it, now again, the, the bigger question is, do we think this is appropriate in the watershed? There are a lot of things we don't allow in Lake Residential and Ag Resource, we don't allow most businesses and things like that, so. You know, that, that's kind of the conundrum that we face, you know, how much do we want to, you know, find that balance between allowing people to have some, personal property rights, and then also saying what's better for the, for this community as a whole, that is a largely resort, resort-based community.
I mean, that's why I think you have to have legitimate, I would say legitimate, a more, like the five hundred foot versus the thousand foot, at least, if there is somebody who wants to shout that guy, I want you to do that, then it would allow them an opportunity to do it. If a person had a hundred acre lot at five hundred foot setbacks, that's going to, you're going to have a thirty acre piece left that he can put like a solar panel. I don't know, that, I would want to try to accomplish, I mean, is there enough positive to, outweigh the negative, I don't know, it's a tough, it's stuck off.
Yeah, it is, because you could be strict and we can limit it, or you can find a compromise that allows it in certain places, and that's the ultimate question.
Well, acknowledging that out on O'Brien Road, and after that way, the parcels are probably going to tend to be bigger anyway, so. You know, go, go five hundred feet if that, if the board's more comfortable with that.
I, I, I'm just, I'm, all I'm going to point out, playing devil's advocate a lot of ways, pointing out that if I've got a fifty acre parcel, five hundred feet, it's still locked down, basically, you know what I mean? That tells you that the parcel has to be bigger than fifty acres to make even a five hundred foot setback work. So you go to sixty acres, you might have five acres, you go to seventy acres, you might have ten acres at five hundred foot, you know what I mean, at a hundred acres, you're going to have, you know, twenty acres, twenty-five acres, you know what I mean?
A five hundred foot setback, so we think of that as thousand foot, five thousand foot, uh, that comes out to about twenty-three acres. Now, that doesn't leave any room, that's just setback, you know, that's taken up the whole lot with setbacks, so you're starting at twenty-three, and then you'd have to grow that lot in the middle, someplace for.
So twenty-three, so then back to your fifty, giving twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Right, so that, right, the bigger lot you go, that's at five hundred feet, right?
Yeah, that's, that's just a general.
So the thousand feet, that's why I said the thousand feet goes to clear down, at fifty acres.
So you want to say five hundred?
I mean, I, there's only more dealt, dealt with the negativity of it, and if you guys are comfortable with that, I mean, I don't know if we're making a five or six today or not, but, at five hundred feet, something is.
Five hundred seems reasonable.
You think reasonable, that, Bill?
I mean, I'm just.
Tim, you okay with that? Bruce, is that something?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not a voter.
Well, I know what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm asking your opinion.
That was actually a number that I threw out to Chad, uh, when we were chatting through the, um, I, I thought that was a good number.
I guess what I'm saying is, we're not shutting down the total process, but that way.
No, you're making a, a.
It's like, you know, when you're trying to get something.
Compromise between what fracking was and this, this is a quiet, uh, operation, so you're still allowing them, uh, um, the use.
Do we want it, that, okay, I'll put five hundred feet, I think that, that may somewhat take care of the minimum acreage, I mean, that's going to bump us up to larger, parcels, I don't know if we need to have a minimum acreage, or we just say.
That's up to you, I mean, I, I just got to, you just have to get, I read.
I mean, if you were, and, and I keep visualizing and listening to everything you guys are saying, and I, and I sit there and I think, okay, I totally get five hundred feet or whatever off of, off of, um, the roadway. And, and then I, you know, I start thinking, is it necessary to be five hundred feet off of a back line? And five hundred feet off of the sideline, five hundred feet, I, I, I just wonder that, if it, if it, ends up creating that much of an anger, aggravation, or if that's a, um, you know, number that can be, you know, the, the optimal goal was five hundred feet, and, you know, is there flexibility to three hundred feet on those things? Only be, only just to keep from overly getting challenged on it, I don't know.
I think you're still going, you're still going to have the ability to, uh, apply it for variance from that.
But variance has, you have to prove a hardship, what's the hardship for that?
That's true.
I mean, I'm okay with five hundred, don't get me wrong, I, I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking, if, in, in certain situations where, let's, let's put it in a different direction. Farmer John's out there has an opportunity to put one of these things on their property with pretty restrictive set, setbacks. Or Farmer John goes to Yoho Developer and develops that property, and it turns into thirty houses on there, that sit in the middle of a farm field, what, what, what looks worse, potentially, you know? Um, and, and so I, I almost think like, what you do is, is, is you say, you know, create a good setback from the roads, create a reasonable setback from adjoining property owners. Require that, you know, don't give twenty-five feet of height, maybe the height's fifteen or twenty or whatever. And that, and, or, if you, you know, uh, uh, the side setbacks can be, two fifty or three hundred, or whatever they might be, provided that there is a ongoing tree in area, or a, or they're willing to plant the pine trees, which, you know, that have to be maybe ten feet tall, or whatever they are, or, and, and that, and they have the ability to harvest them every so many years to, if it makes, you know, turn them into landscape trees, they, they can take, pots of those areas and, and then replant in, in those areas and, and grow it back in, I, I'm, I'm just, all this stuff keeps running through my mind, and I keep going, well, you know, if you can, if you can, and, you want to still encourage those guys to keep that land undeveloped, don't we? I mean, I would.
Development's already regulated in, different in the ER two than it is LR one, obviously, so the development is already regulated, I think, um, I mean, trying not to lose track of the goal here is, is to, you know, to, to make it tough for them to be in the watershed area, you know what I mean?
You know, you look at the, the Wolf Den project, it's just going to be two thousand acres, it's not going to be visible from anywhere, but the air. So that's, that's the other extreme, you know, I mean, it's covered up with trees everywhere, and you won't be able to see it from thirty-eight or one thirty-five, nowhere unless you're flying, it's probably the only time you'll see it, but yet. Well, now. These areas, the other, the other side of the spectrum, you know.
Right.
But that's not zoned and.
I, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to put, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here driving in my car while we're having this conversation, I'm going, okay, I see the sand flat, I see the turkey neck ridge, I see the, um, the road going over to Green Glade, I see North Glade Road. They're all areas that are susceptible to something and visible.
And see, and see, they're, they're attracted to the farms, because there's no trees, for the former strip jobs, that's why they came, that's why they went to Wolf Den, there's already a few hundred acres there that's exposed, right now. They don't have to, they are going to cut trees there, but, but the farms are already, usable now, yeah.
Well, yeah, no, no, again, I, I just, I haven't put near as much thought in this as I probably should have before now, but I, just trying to make sure we think it all out, that's all.
Wait, I, I, that, that's what we want, we want them in our line areas, outdoor areas, remote areas, where we don't want them is on Eddie Beckman's field on, right, on, on North Glade Road across from, uh, Waterfront, you know what I mean, that's, that's what I, I think the goal is to drive, and, and that's where we get into the setback, I think.
And you know, looking at them too, the ones that are going to be in flatlands aren't, maybe won't be as noticeable as that one on that ridge, you know, that's going around there.
It gets hard to make one size fits all regulations, because we do have subdivisions mixed in throughout that watershed, so, you know, if we sat down, we could probably, pick out a few parcels that they could happen without, um, a lot of backlash, but we can also say, well, over here, we've got a subdivision right next to it. And this one's very visible, so it does get hard to.
Well, we could, we could do what you're saying, you know, uh, in these different zoning districts, but, yeah, you could, I mean, without saying they're not allowed, you could create a situation where it's not economical to do it because of the setbacks, and because of the, distances or the.
That was the advice we got, that's exactly.
Right, make it, if, if there's areas we don't want it, make it.
The special exception is what we decided to use this area.
Excuse me.
If we use this, we're going to use a special exception, and it's not over.
But they will be, you know, I would like to say that we have general guidelines, if there's certain places we do or don't want it, we should regulate that, through setbacks, when it gets to the Board of Appeals, then they're just looking at that specific place to say, is there something specific about this property? Um, and they may say, well, we want some conditions, this side's wide open, we want a little extra planting or something, they can do conditions there. But we can't expect the board to, you know, regulate the use in terms of permitted or not permitted, by the time it gets to a special exception. The presumption would be they would approve it unless there's something, certainly if they come to a place and it's a, uh, trout stream or something, and there's proof that this is going to disrupt that, they could say, no, there's something really specific about this property, they always have that power, but, in general, we don't want to put them in the situation that they're in now, where there's not a lot of guideline, they're the ones facing all the heat. Uh, we should have these regulations in place, and then they can deal with anything above and beyond the normal regulations, and look at that specific property, decide if there's something that needs to be done.
And doesn't this glare comment, there, like glare bullet point, kind of also protect in a lot of ways too, that, you know, you got to provide the evidence when you come in that, it, it's not going to be a, a visible issue to roads, and it's not going to be a, you know, a glare problem there, and that we're neighboring parcels.
Yeah, that was kind of a general statement I found, I mean, you could beef that up and say, uh, you know, glare study has to be done or something.
Yeah, because, you know, what's actually interesting is the one where, that's on the sewer property. It'll nail you if you're going up Oakland Sand Road, have you ever had that, cutting across there, you, all of a sudden, you're just like, what the heck is that?
A lot of what I'm saying to you guys today is based on what I've seen and heard and learned through this one on Sand Flat. And one of the first things they gave us after their statement of justification was a study by somebody that said, the glare is not a problem. So that, they have them, they have the glare and glint, you remember what glint was? Glare is, you know, glare is the shine and all, the glint is the flack you get when you pass something like that, you know what I mean? They already have all that covered, so they said the one on, the one on Sand Flat that would face Sand Flat Road, when the sun's that way, would not, it'd be a glare problem. They already have that figured out.
So what I, what I get to, unless getting to Chad with the special exception, you know, say we go five hundred foot setback, fifty, fifty eight acre minimum or whatever. Does that allow for a person to come in and file, especially, instead of a variance, a special exception to a piece of property that is, you know, someplace away, and that, that gives them a chance to go case by case?
Yeah, so anybody that meets all these requirements, if they meet those, then the ordinance is going to say that use is still a special exception, and then they would present their case to the board, now the board's going to have to have very specific reasons to deny it. They can put conditions, so they can look at that specific one, say, okay, you meet these setbacks, but we want, you know, a little stronger setback here, or we want plantings or something, you know, so it's, it's, um, they're going to be dealing more with details rather than just outright denying something normally with a special exception.
That's why, Bruce talks about a variance, I keep looking at it, if we're going to fully, or we're going to, for lack of a better term, police it with a special exception, that's how we're going to hear it, so if we use these setbacks, if somebody comes in with a hundred acre piece of ground, then you guys can approve that based on this criteria, right?
Yeah, the, the presumption is that they would approve it, there's a presumption that it will be, so if we want to regulate.
What makes my class, so the special exception is presumed to be accepted.
Yeah, variance is your, that's a whole different animal, that's where, instead of going forty feet away, you want to go thirty, you're asking them to break the rules for you to go thirty. Special exception's different, that's just dealing with use.
Special exception's different, that's just dealing with use, it's sometimes called conditional, you know, conditional uses or something like that.
I was trying to figure out what they could look at if, let's say that somebody from North Glade comes in and says we wanna put them in there, well, you can't do that because here's, you know, I mean.
Well, they're gonna have a hard time saying, just saying you can't do that, there would have to be something very specific where they're saying that this one. Kind of like with the last one, they're saying, we think the impact here was greater than the impact other places because of how visible it was gonna be.
So you're thinking a guy who enters a thousand acre parcel and he meets all his criteria, they would have a hard time turning down a special exception?
Yeah, unless there's something unique about that property that they say, wow, this one is really worse than all the other locations, we really can't allow that.
The way they explain it to us, Tony, is if once, if it's a special exception and once it meets the criteria that, that is set forth for that special exception, it is a, it is presumed permitted and the only way we can turn it down is if we can show that it's worse there than anywhere else in the zoning district. Right?
By variance that you had, you could.
Yeah, but I was wrong, Tony, Bill, Bill was right when he said that they have to have hardship to get that variance. And it's hard to show what's hardship when it's a.
Well, the hardship, I mean, to me, potential hardship, Bruce answers these questions, not me. Would be if there's some stream running down the middle of the property that they can't get within so many feet of, does that constitute hardship?
There could be a physical hardship like that, it would be, this is a little different than the normal house where you're fitting it in a little tiny lot. But I, I assume that to say they could make their case if there were some physical conditions.
Yeah, they, I mean, they might have a two hundred acre parcel that's only five hundred feet wide and a mile long, you know? Like that, I'd be, that wouldn't, they'd have plenty of land, but they wouldn't meet the setback.
Yeah, but is that a hardship?
You know, variance or variance form, one of the things is extremely narrow, shallow or steep, so if, if that's the same. Criteria would apply, then yeah, I would say, yeah.
So, so as an example, a thousand foot wide or a seven hundred foot wide property that doesn't meet. Technically though, is that, is that a narrow property?
See, I'm not sure what the, what the scale is on this, when we're doing, when we're doing residential properties, we're doing variance for a house. It's basically, it's based on what a standard lot is. So when the standard lot is whatever, is one fifty by whatever, when you come to us with a smaller lot and you wanna, and you wanna build closer to the line than the variance allows, than, than the zoning ordinance allows, that's a hardship because you have a substandard lot. So I don't know how you would, I don't know what the rule of measure would be in something like this, you know what I mean? I don't think it would be the same.
I, I think that'd be tough to prove it as a hardship. If the property's five or six or seven hundred feet wide and let's say it's five thousand feet deep, how's that a hardship? I mean, that's, that's a pretty damn nice piece of property.
I agree, that, that's why I said a variance would, for this would be, I, I.
Yeah.
Said that I was wrong in, in venturing that direction, that's.
Okay, so you got on our list, we're gonna go first.
All right, so do we, my, okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you got.
I was, on your list, I mean, to me, we're past the setback, we use five hundred feet as, and, and the height, I would go lower. So let's say twenty, that's twenty percent lower than what he's finding elsewhere.
That was one of their selling points in the, in the application last week was how, how compared to other forms of energy, how low they were. I thought he said ten feet, but maybe it was twenty-five, so less is better.
Well, if, if there's something you can find that says it's ten feet that you can get, it's, I mean, there's, that, that comment's recorded somewhere, then change it to less, to whatever that comment was.
Yeah, these are just kind of discussion starters, the things I threw out.
So the glare, even what's there is pretty beefy to me, I'm, I'm sure you can beef it up more. But on the maximum size, if they meet the other requirements, do we even care what the size is?
Yeah, this was, I kinda threw this in as an alternate way you could go, that some places look more at the overall size and you could only cover a certain percent.
If you need everything else, knock yourself out.
Yeah, this was kinda just a different way to go.
So that, that, that becomes less, can we just wipe it out?
Okay, and you say twenty foot for now per total height?
Yeah, unless Bruce can get you a lower number, and then I would say screening has to be ten feet tall.
To start with?
Yep, because to me, that's gonna be super expensive, they're gonna have to buy what, fourteen or fifteen foot, or twelve or thirteen foot by the time they get the ball on the ground?
We probably have to, I mean, can we take something like they showed us in that? Because we, we don't always say is they have to be screened for reference, effective interest screened by strip of dense evergreens planted no less than twenty-five feet in width and ten feet apart.
Or ten foot tall, is that what you?
Ten foot tall.
Ten foot apart, ten feet tall and alternating in.
Like a V.
Uh huh.
I mean, it'd be hard once down to forty-two to get dead foot tall.
Those ones down there, they staggered, the first row and the second row, so.
We did in Blakesley to break the snow from coming across, we staggered them and, and made them like in a V.
Right.
So however you say that in some fashion is what.
I'll see if I can find some more details about.
Yeah.
What do we decide, what do we start, what would we decide on setback? You know, you know what would be, cause I'm an engineer, so it might be good to see then, once we, we get some numbers, if somebody in the department can take, like I just took a, a hundred acre parcel. And a hundred acres aren't normally square, but a hundred acre parcel at five hundred foot setbacks leaves a twenty-five acre parcel in the middle. So that's what you're left with, you know, so, you know, and then how many solar arrays, would they, would they build a twenty-five acre solar array then in there? So, but, I mean, it'd be interesting then to see what the footprint does look like after we assemble some numbers to see, you know, how it limits the parcel, you know? But that's, that's, that's fictional because all of our properties, I mean, we, we have, we have few military lots that are gonna be square, you know? And, and that, and a hundred acre parcels might not even allow, you know, because of the narrowness of it, so.
Has a notch in it or something?
Yeah, yep.
So the decommissioning, the language is what I took from state law that regulates industrial wind systems. And I will share that with the county attorney just to see if he thinks that's appropriate for this, but I just kinda copied and pasted that in there. I will kinda defer to him, see if that's appropriate.
The other thing I questioned was less the salvage value of the system, I don't know why we wanna put that burden on that whoever's decommissioned, I mean. They should, they should have to put enough up to get rid of the, the salvage, I don't think that's your problem.
Okay, yeah, I can.
I guess, I guess the writer thought that the company would get the salvage, somebody, are they assuming that? That they get the salvage value of the system? Who gets, who gets the salvage value there?
I guess the idea is you had to put up a bond. So you were giving them some, you were subtracting the salvage value out of it, you were just trying to get a bond just basically for the cost of.
You know, back to, back to the windmills, I do know the first ones in West Virginia were built, didn't have the decommissioning in it. And they, the next ones do. But I think in Mineral County, I, I think I'm correct, they, they made the, the windmill companies value. Put a value on the salvage, the actual salvage cost of each project and put money up at escrow. And each year they had to evaluate it whether they're, the cost to salvage it and the cost of the salvage of the equipment. And, you know, and so that they kept that in, in good standing.
Real time.
Yeah, so that if it, if, if they did have to decommission them, that there'd be money there for them, so. And I, it's, but I don't know who, where the salvage value went, you know, of this, yeah. And they also, and they also had to take it so far below surface because some of them have pads, some of them have foundations that go deeper.
I've seen that too, so many feet below the surface or something.
Right, but, but they had dollars, you know, attached to how much it costs to, to tear them down and how much salvage value's there and they had to keep it in equilibrium so that, you know, the, the county wasn't stuck with some bill.
I mean, that's probably somebody for the legal minds to figure out, I mean, the next, the next paragraph required out to post a bond equal a hundred percent of the cost estimate determined under item I. This paragraph, and justify the estimated construction pricing, anyway, so it sounds like to me like they're saying, we want you to take a hundred percent bond out of the. We want you to take a bond that's equal to a hundred percent of what it's gonna cost the decommissionees if you, if, if you go away. But then you can back out the salvage value, I don't know why you.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm just kinda copying and pasting.
Wouldn't that salvage value vary in twenty years?
Sure.
Stuff might be worthless.
That's why it has to be done.
He says something about adjusting the next year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but who's gonna do, who's gonna enforce that and chase that?
It would be like a bond like we have for anything else, like a stormwater pond or road construction or anything else, we would have that capability if they take off and the county would.
And we have that with the Bureau of Mines, you know, with our mining process, we have to have so much bond money up for an acre. And, and if we run away, they get, they get to keep the bond money.
Right.
And, and right now, the state of Maryland has been underfunded with bonds and now, now we're doing what's called full cost bonding. So if we start a new job, we have to have what's called full cost bonding according to the Department of, the, well, the Department of Interior dictates that. And, and that's up to about seven thousand dollars an acre now. But, but the Bureau of Mines chases us, you know, with that.
Well, my, my gut is with all the stuff that's going in here, it's gonna really have to be worthwhile for somebody to even think about doing this. So we'll probably eliminate the remaining list.
But yeah, you have to think about the, the pressure that's on each of the states by Washington to have so much green energy. You know, this year, next year, the following years, and.
Well, and that's why I brought up the point that I brought up earlier, which is, is there a way to tie? Something similar to these regulations, maybe not as difficult, into, you'll get the building permit subject to. You know, yeah, you don't have any zoning restrictions, but if you still want the luxury of getting the ag tax or the forestry tax or whatever you're getting or the solar free tax, which probably the state of Maryland will come up with before long, if they don't already have it. I, I'm serious, I, you think about the way Maryland thinks, that, that if they're, that we have it and say, hey, you can put that solar farm out there, but.
We're getting some of it.
You, you, well, if you, if you wanna qualify for those things, you have to meet these restrictions. There's a, there's a great way to come up with that, it's, it's a perfect time to do it.
That would be more like a performance based, you know, this is Euclidean zoning where you say this is the areas you can and can't, yes or no. The performance based zoning would be something like what you're describing, where you don't necessarily say yes or no, but you have, if you do all these things, then you can do.
You can get a permit to do this if you do these things.
I don't know what one of those things would be.
And I think that's a way, then that might be a, that might be a, a way to do other things in the future. The building permit for these uses is subject to this, setbacks, things like that. So in essence, if you wanna do the crazy thing out in that area, that's fine, but you gotta do these. So maybe, maybe we can fix, fix those problems with some.
How much, you need to have to get all this money today?
No, we can, and I thought if we kinda went through it and we wanna think about it, and then I could try to summarize.
I just say that because we're in the meeting two hours, I didn't bother to.
I mean, it's up to you guys if you, I, I don't know that the accessory would take as long, I think the bigger.
I think we covered the tough one already, the other stuff.
I might go through it all, that way, you okay with that, Bruce?
Yeah.
Tim, you okay with that?
So accessory, I define that as a solar system consisting of roof and or ground mounted solar collection devices incidental to, located on the same lot as a permitted principal use. So basically this is generating electricity for the use and or benefit of the principal use in the property except incidental excess energy can be provided the utility company exchange for credits. This is supposed to be something that's on a business or on a house. I did put a little introductory paragraph up there to try to think of those kind of best case or worst case scenarios. Just for example, you know, these could be rather big if it's commercial. The, the county sewer treatment plant, Mayhew Road, that's about seven and a half acres of solar panels on a thirty-one acre lot. The Wisp Shop and Save, Quaint Inn and Suites, Garrett College, those are all examples of other buildings and or properties that could potentially have rather large accessory ground and or solar mounted solar, or roof mounted solar. So I just want everybody to be thinking of that, you know, if we permit those, you could have places like that that end up having a lot of coverage and I don't know how. So does anybody just in general have a problem with permitting solar either on the roof or ground as accessory to residential uses?
Well, I think, I think the first thing I'd like to confirm, because I haven't seen one, I haven't taken the time to see it either, is if they're on a roof, that they could perform to the latest technology where it's part of a shingle, because it, you supposedly can't see it.
Yeah, I've heard of that, I don't know that we've ever seen it.
Yoclopa House had one of those, I think, with, going in, we couldn't even tell what it was, like a strip below the shingle.
I don't know, but I think if you're gonna put them on, if you're gonna put them on residential structures, that. I, I, I guess my point being is, why don't we get and see what it actually looks like? And then maybe we can say it has to be a minimum of that standard versus those skylight looking things that sit on people's roofs. That really look like that.
So the question is, we wanna permit it, right?
Yeah, and I think the technol, you know, what, what Bill's saying is I think there is technology out there that it's, it looks like a shingle. I've not seen that in any of our, we've not done any permits for it, I don't think. I don't know how prevalent that technology is, what we're seeing is basically panels mounted to a roof. So I think for the foreseeable future, that's probably what we would be seeing.
Solar shingles.
They're gonna look like slate shingles.
Yeah.
So is the reason for setbacks to be any different than whatever the house setbacks are in that district?
Well, I was thinking setback, they could be, or they could be, you know, a shed.
Okay, we're a shed setback, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking just like have it as a shed setback, but I guess with your question, do we want to say what type they can be?
Again, getting, look, shed is gonna probably in most people's minds are better than a solar thing. I, I'm just thinking that they have, they should be a minimum of so many feet off the road.
That's what I was, the shed setback on lakefront lots is twenty-five feet from the road. You get, you get opposite, you don't get the backyard setback of five and five. On lakefront lots, you get twenty-five feet from the front, so they don't want them by the lake, so you gotta be careful there. You'll have ground arrays sitting along.
I, I was just gonna say like twenty feet, so if you wanna use whatever you use for shed.
Twenty-five feet is for a shed, right?
It depends on what size it is, it's different if it's lakefront, it depends on what size it is. If it's under twenty square feet or less for a shed, you can go closer to the, to the lake. So it, it's a little complicated with sheds, but we can set whatever setback we want.
I, I, I agree with Bruce that use whatever the setback is on, on those things. And I, I would, you know, thinking about the situation where the house is already existing and it's inside of a setback, that that doesn't, that doesn't solve your problem. You still have to meet the minimum setbacks for that stuff.
I mean, we can't just say it's the same as a shed, that's the simplest thing to do. So any of these ground mount, we would just say it's an accessory structure and it meets the same exact setbacks as any. Say any of these ground mount, we would just say it's an accessory structure, and it meets the same exact setbacks as any shed or anything else.
I think that's a good way to go for now.
Okay. Same for non-residential, now, it, some of this is hard for me to envision, you could have a place, has a lot of these.
But again, these are for use on the property for the future life.
Yeah, now, the, again, the.
So that's when you look at the size of them, isn't it?
Well, the, the county property has those, that are, I think, would technically be accessory to that use. That, that gets where it's a little different, I don't know the exact, how exactly they operate. They weren't done, it's just a commercial operation sold, I think it was something where the county has an agreement to buy perhaps electricity from them, don't quote me on that, because I don't know the exact details, but it's tied into that existing use there.
Are you intending to limit the square footage of those accessory ground structures?
Well, that's a question, do we wanna allow, you know, the worst case scenario, a homeowner comes in to our office and says, well, I wanna put five sheds on my property, we don't stop them from putting five sheds on there, you can put as many as you want, as long as you meet setbacks, it could potentially be the same for solar, they could try to cover a large amount of that property with solar, I don't know if anybody has an issue with that. I mean, that is something I put down as a suggestion, um, if we want to, again, these are all just suggestions to discuss, should, is there a limit?
Has that, any, everybody seen those ground mounted residential panels? They look like bleachers almost, standing on the ground, but they, they're, instead of just having the, the seats, you've got the panels in a horizontal array, they don't move like these big commercial.
They just have steps in it, like.
No, they're just like that.
They're, they're long.
They have a bleacher effect underneath them, supporting them, so they, they create a hori, a horizontal wall. My, my concern with that is if they're allowed in lakefront lots on the roadside, if somebody goes in and puts in, covers their whole front yard that meets a setback, it's gonna be a pretty unattractive situation, that you may wanna consider the setbacks plus a, a square footage as well.
My, my experience from before, they have to be, don't they have to be south facing?
Yeah, I think.
So that's gonna eliminate some, some of the lakefront lots.
Right.
Even from being able to use.
Some of the counties had a, a limitation on the square footage of the ground mounted ones, that they had to be equal or less than the, the roof square footage.
I saw you had a hundred twenty square feet in here, that.
I just do that out, I just.
Yeah, and that, that actually is not a bad way to go, because it also is the accessory that they allow on the buffer strip. But I, I think somebody would challenge on the thing with the south, because every property technically in some way has a southern facing side to it, right?
Well, possibly, but all of the lots have trees on them, so, you know, it's like, it's like when you put, back when we all put satellite dishes on.
Right.
And, you know, we, some places you couldn't even get out to see, so I just wonder whether there's even a south facing enough area on a lot, you know, to do that.
It probably mostly isn't, I'm just saying that I think, that every lot.
You can't rely on that.
It's got some part of it that's facing south.
So you're talking about going with whatever you put on the roof, you can put on the ground?
The same amount of square footage, but that was the other thing we talked about, was a hundred and twenty square feet period.
I, I would just, I'd make it a hundred and twenty square feet max, period.
That allow you to have a ten by twelve, or, yeah.
In your yard. And, and it can't be, I mean, I'm looking at these things right here, and if they're angled right, he's right, it looks like, it looks like bleachers, and they're like ten feet tall.
At least, there's one out along, uh, the Oakland-Samron Road, I believe, across from, just before you get the stock slider on the left, there's a thing, an array in the front yard like that. It's got, I'd say it's twenty-five feet tall minimum.
You know, a hundred twenty square feet, that ain't gonna generate a whole lot of power.
Ten by ten.
What's that?
That's ten by ten.
Well, I'm saying, some of these houses, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that out loud, and.
Well, ideally, what you're trying to do, I think, is if they're gonna use anything.
Put it on the roof.
To put it into the, the, because they're shingles that they have already developed, are stupid expensive, I'm sure, because they're Teslas, and they're, they're, but they look good, so if somebody wants to do that, great. But I would keep, I like your hundred and twenty square feet, because you all, you have other precedents. And the maximum size, a hundred and twenty square feet, on, if, if not.
For residential.
If not attached to the house.
The ground mounted.
It's not part of the roof system of the house or something.
I'm not saying to navigate for permanent.
What about for non-residential, so we get a place like the Wisp, they wanna.
That, that's what we thought, because let's say you look at Areahead or something, not Areahead. Some of the places don't have any land.
Wisp could potentially put them on, to put the bleachers on the roof.
Yeah.
But they could also have them sprinkled throughout, I, I'm just trying to think of bigger properties, you know, some of those scenarios where they convince, and we wanna put these throughout this property.
We talked about them being on those rooftops as well, but with parapet walls that were high enough that you're not, you know, not seeing them.
You only see them if you're in the area.
Scenic highway, if you're in a helicopter, you'll see them.
Yeah, for, for, if we wanna skip a little bit on roof mounted, if you remember, we do have those architectural guidelines for non-residential properties, and one of the things on there said, any new construction, if you put equipment on a roof, on a flat roof, you had to have a parapet to hide, and so I added something like that, just to see if that's something, I don't know how visible they would be.
A lot of places have a parapet, Areahead, you know, but the walls aren't high, they're in a height of the height. If you see the, if you look up on Areahead, you're driving down, you'll see a unit up, unit up on top. That's just the way it's gonna be in some of those places, but.
The other thing you could do is, I think I put a maximum height of three foot above the, of the roof, or five foot above the roof for a flat roof. So do you wanna limit the size of ground mount on non-residential?
I don't know, I, I'd like to think about that a little bit, about how you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I mean, that could be one that we consider, it's getting a little later.
Be expected for looking at a.
Um.
I mean, because you know a hundred twenty yard, a hundred twenty square feet is gonna be enough to do, you know, if you want the power in an area that big, you know.
We're talking about non-residential?
Yeah.
Well, we, I.
You could have a different.
He was talking about limiting them to a hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah, I kinda had that as a central cap.
I mean, if you did, if you did that, that'd be like saying, no, you, you're not doing it.
Yeah, you can light up your mailbox.
Turn on one of your refrigerators in the Shop and Save.
What a good day.
You might be able to use a lucky chaser, but that's, or razor, but that's about it.
I can imagine, like the college, maybe, you know, that might be something.
Well, the college could put behind the baseball.
I can, I can think, I can think about the fairground, that's why.
Fair, yeah, fairgrounds is another example, so I'm trying to think ahead of, um, do we have issues with that, you know? I'm just trying to think of, think ahead a little bit. Is that one you?
Or someplace like Double G Ranch, you know, or some places, you know, that, that's what I said, I, you need to, you need to be pretty, pretty low. Okay, any help, Tim?
We can talk.
Do you wanna discuss those next week, think, you wanna think about the accessory ones a little bit more?
Yeah, let's just pick that up. I do have one other question that, that, because we keep running into these things more and more, just. Anytime a lot is approved now in the county, and it's on a county road, or a state road, or whatever, I'm assuming now that the driveway stuff is part of the approval process.
Yeah, I think, I think like twenty twelve or twenty ten, we, we added it to the checklist and said, you now have to get an entrance permit.
So, the big elephant in the room to me, though, is what's gonna happen when all these people that got lots approved beforehand that are getting turned down right and left now? Because, I mean, I just have one turned down that has eight hundred feet of road frontage. How do you get turned down with eight hundred feet of road frontage, but it did? What's gonna happen when these people come back and say, I've been paying taxes on these properties for all these, are you gonna reimburse me for my property that's worthless now? Are you gonna give me my money back now that you're taking my right of way to build on it? I, I mean, something needs looked at with this, because we're having lakefront lots getting turned down. And, 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 and I, I, I mean, I just think it's a subject we need to start covering, because if some of these people paid big money for lots that you'd never in a hundred million years even think that we should be asking about that, but they don't meet, because either the speed limits are too much on the road, and then you gotta pay them to do a study on the road, and should we be going out recommending that there, that the speed limits on the roads that front the lake all become twenty-five mile an hour or something other than maybe Garrett Highway?
Is it site, what is it turned down?
Site, site issues. They're turn, I'm not telling you, I can't tell you how many we've had turned down in the last two years, it's stunning. Maybe some of these people are paying five and six thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. Well, you have to go to your neighbor across the street and get them to cut their bank down. You gotta cut your bank down for the neighbor across the street?
Well, it's a tough situation, because it's a safety thing, so nobody, nobody wants to be the one to.
But, but, you know, but the point being is, what, you know, especially, like, and I'll, I use the lake as an, as an example right now, with, with these things that are out there, um, you know, maybe we should be looking at it and saying, okay, wait, maybe the, maybe the county now could just adopt in any area, that if there's, if there's things that have, these lots existed before this one entered place, and now there's safety issues, the speed limit in those areas automatically get reduced to twenty-five or whatever, I don't know. But it just seems like, that, that, what these people are going through is just, and, and, and it's not their fault, and, you know.
Wasn't.
These lots were, I mean, some of these, the one lakefront lot that's got two hundred feet of frontage on Lake Shore Drive. It's on the outside of a curve, worse yet, I mean, it's not like it's on the inside, it's got pretty good visibility in my mind coming up on it, and, and the speed limit on the road is like thirty-five mile an hour right there, which you can't even do thirty-five where it's at. So I, and my point being is, I, I think this is something that needs really looked at, and it's something that maybe we can give some advice to them to.
Any other concerns, complaints? Next meeting is July fourth, right?
Yeah.
Is it really July fourth?
July seventh.
July seventh, Tim said July seventh, I'll probably be on five.
Does that sound right?
All right, so continue thinking about that, and we'll, um, we'll reconvene and hammer out the accessory.
Did you get what, are we going the right direction?
I think so. Time's, time's of the essence.
We gotta, we gotta simplify that process.
Yeah.
Going away at the transient rental, really good opportunity. Simplify some of it, I think.
Oh, that's a big step, yeah, with the substantial, their lots and all that's going to have a bunch.
You need me to sign some papers?
Uh, need you, we all done?